We'll have a moment to start the meditation. Pledge the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda, consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McCorr. Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning. How was everyone this morning?
Good.
Good. All right. We have 10 exonerations for $1,092.75, minutes for March 24th, 2021. There's also minutes included for the special meeting on March 26th, 2021, where you approved the budget. Vouchers, General County Fund, $36,049.90. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,005.1769. Camp Muffley, $1,005.7913. Mason Dixon Park, $486.33. Assessment valuation, $46. Payroll, $929,636.79. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, $16,115.98. Chestnut Ridge Park, $329.19. Camp Muffley, $373.02. Mason Dixon Park, $162.83. Recreation levy, $4,043.481. Assessment valuation, $5,0274.65. For voucher total of $997,632.32. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are west. I do this every week. I've got to take that off of there. Those are listed on her website. Fiduciary orders for March 31st, 2021.
Move for approval. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Renetta.
I have one other item. The clerk sent up two applications for after-hours key card access to the clerk's office for Mary Dalton. She's with Bowles Rice. And Tesla Lewis is also with Bowles Rice. These are abstractors.
Okay. Motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other items?
No.
Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees, personnel changes. Captain Rollston.
That'll be it.
I did see it behind the post.
Yeah. The sheriff seeks your approval of these two individuals. The first one is Kayden Skowinski. Date of eligible employment will be April 1st tomorrow as a full-time transport officer. And the next one is Sylvia James with an effective date of April 1st also as a full-time court security officer. Both positions would be filling current vacancies that we have.
Move for approval.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Welcome to the county.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Hope you're not too busy.
Do we have any other personnel changes?
No, sir.
Comments from the public. Now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to address the commission, come forward. Okay, it does not look like we have any visitors from the public. Closed comments from the public. Colleen Kuhn, grants.
This morning, I have the grant application for the VOCA program. We are requesting $139,536. In addition to signing that application, you also have to sign the standard condition and assurances and the federal standard condition and assurances.
Move for approval. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, Renetta?
Just the positive, I sent those 26 roads and already, half of them have already been paved or potholes been fixed, and I want to thank the DOH for responding so quickly.
Mr. Arnott?
Just the flyer for the Sergeant Todd May golf tournament, the fundraiser coming up for the memorial fund. Contact the sheriff's office or contact us. We can get the information if you'd like to participate in that event for a very worthy cause.
Unfinished business. Let's see, we have none. New business. Consideration, decision on method of sale to pursue for current refunding of the Montague County Building Commission, lease revenue bond, Series 2014A for the Montague County Justice Center in order to achieve debt service savings.
Could we, I'd like to move that till table, till next week.
Okay.
So a second.
We have a second. A first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item will be tableed until next week. Next item is to consider the extension of the supplemental funding provided to the Visit Mountaineer Country Convention and Visitors Bureau for additional three-month period. How's the commission just want to move?
Move for approval.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, do we have any discussion?
Just, we also received the letter, not only appreciative of what we're doing, but also in the letter, they also in agreement that this would be a phase-out program, that this would be the last three months that, you know, they felt that they're ready to move forward and would not need our funding. So, and it's kind of what we've been hoping would happen.
Okay, and the next three months would mean that for the all of fiscal year '21.
Exactly.
We gave the Convention and Visitors Bureau all of our funding that we received in from hotel taxes. Generally, we by statute have to provide 50% of that, but for the past year, in order that they can ramp up and try to get back to normal, we've given them 100%. So this will be for the full year.
And already, we are hearing events that are about to happen this summer, and this could not have happened without the preparation now for the event. So once we're, you know, we'll give a better clarification and understanding what the money was used for. And they were also able to bring back two and three employees, which they had to have. Yeah.
Great. All right, well, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, consideration to approve the request by Matt Dreher, general manager of West Virginia Black Bears for funding in the amount of $16,200 to assist with cleanup following the dynamic baseball events tournaments.
Move for approval with discussion.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Do you have that letter in front of you? I don't have the letter.
I have the application.
Yeah, the application. If you could just explain what, does it say what it's for so the public is aware?
It says three baseball tournaments that will be three days each, so a total of nine days. Teams will be from outside the Morgantown area. COVID-19 cleaning is estimated at $1,800 per game.
Right.
Okay, and this is essentially for the cleanup.
Right.
So it's nine times 1,800 is how they come up with that amount, and it's for the cleanup after the games. And this is consistent with prior year fundings. We have a fund that we put aside, about $25,000 a year to fund events, specifically events at the Mont Kelly Ballpark. So this would be the use of that funding, correct, Renetta?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business? Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Looks like we have a visitor today.
Yeah, I didn't recognize it till you looked up, yes.
Is that where my robbing mask?
We have the Honorable J.B. McCuskey, auditor of State of West Virginia, has come visit us today.
With great to see you.
How is everybody? Great. I don't know that, have we met? We met once before, I think.
I believe one time before, yes.
Well, it's nice to see you. Welcome. So the reason, can I take this off real quick?
Sure.
The, you know, as you guys probably have seen, we are launching a pretty significant initiative as it relates to this American Rescue Plan funding. And I was actually on with the city council of Morgantown yesterday. I didn't realize it was a Zoom meeting. I didn't realize it was being broadcast out, and I gave everyone my personal cellphone number. But that was put on the news, I guess, which is fine. But, you know, the whole idea here is this is going to have to be some kind of a collaborative effort. And from the cities and counties standpoint, it's going to have to be collaborative in how we can pool money to tackle sort of larger infrastructure problems, which you guys have a little bit of a different set of problems than many people do. But from my office, this is create, this creates, you know, the first set of money went to the governor, and then they doled it out to you. And they told you what you could and could use it for. This money's now going to you directly, and the cities directly. And interestingly, it sort of ends up becoming my office who tells you what you can and can't do with it. But typically, that would happen after you've spent it. And so what our plan here is, is to set up a system of reporting and then a system of informational outreach that gives you all the tools you need to know what you can and can't spend it on before, but then gives us the ability to continuously audit these funds and to look at the way they're being spent in a way that reduces our burden on the back end, gives us the ability to report the stuff to the federal government anytime it's asked for, and gives us the ability to tell all the cities and counties who are working on these things what the available funds are, what projects can be funded, and then tell the public how that money's being spent. And all of this is an effort to make sure that unlike so many other times, this money ends up actually either under the ground, on the ground or above us, meaning broadband, roads and water and sewer infrastructure, right? Instead of in the pockets of what typically ends up being a large crew of unscrupulous lawyers and consultants who come in and they say, hey, I can tell you how to do this, I can get you more money, blah, 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 blah. They usually can't. And our office can fill that function in almost every single instance. And so our hope is, is that we can save a giant amount of money by cities and counties looking to us for that guidance. Interestingly, we are traveling to Delaware in two weeks. We're going to Ohio next week. We're going to Nashville a few weeks later and a few other states. But the plan that we rolled out, none of the other states had a plan. And so they're all asking us to go to meet with their groups of people who are in charge of this to show them how to set it up. And you guys are sort of a shining example of why this works. You are our original OpenGov partner, and all of this is going to be run through OpenGov software. And the, you will be getting, within the next two weeks, probably this week, an Excel spreadsheet that you're going to be using to track the funds. It's not a simple Excel spreadsheet. It's a little souped up. And it's cloud-based, and it'll load into our system automatically, and you're going to get a special revenue fund. So as soon as the money starts flowing in, you'll place it in this fund. And I don't have the fund number and right in front. Did they already send it to you? Oh, great, you already know what it is. So the money will go in that fund, and then it'll be spent and tracked out of that fund as well. You know, and the point here is, is that, you know, if Marion Harrison and Mon counties decide they want to be whatever it is, the 5G capital of the world, they can say, hey, Bridgeport, Clarksburg, Fairmont, Morgantown, you know, let's see what we can do with $150 million, which is, I think, about what those three counties and cities will have put together. And you could really start to make a marked difference in the way that people's lives actually are conducted when you have that amount of money. And as you all know, the lines that separate the counties and cities are largely imaginary as it relates to infrastructure. And so we all have to sort of look at this stuff as, hey, you know, how do we make what we're doing work better for everybody? And so that's, that's what we're doing. And I'm sure you guys have a myriad of other projects that you've been working on. And, you know, the way that we see this is this is the first time that you have untethered access to an amount of money that can actually fix the problems that you think need fixed, right? So you have limits on how much money you're allowed to even raise through your governments to do the projects you want. And then the ability for you to even draw that money down from grants from the state is also always been limited. And so this will be the first time that our local leaders have, I think, an amount of money that can fix the problems that they've all been trying to fix for a really long time. That's what we got.
Someone like to make a motion to suspend the rules so we can talk back and forth?
So move. Second.
Yeah, and I'd love to answer any questions you guys have.
A first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We suspended our rules so we can, we can talk back and forth. Thank you very much for coming, J.B. You're right, we have to, if you remember back a year or so ago when we got our heroes' pay allotment from the government, from the state government, that was really tough, just dealing with that $100,000 and what we can spend it on. So imagine, you know, the headache that this $20 million is, could be. These are nice problems to have, and we certainly need to make sure that whatever we do with that money is, gets the most bang for the buck, because we'll never have this opportunity again. You know, intelligent people can argue back and forth whether the money should even came.
Correct, but that's irrelevant.
But that's irrelevant. We have the money, and we got to make the best use of it.
That's exactly right.
It's really important that we communicate and we kind of work towards the best, the best possible projects. We have been actually a little bit ahead of the game before this money was announced. We had put out an RFP to do blanket R County and broadband. So we're actually doing through the proposals right now, and we'll probably make an award within the month and maybe have a plan within six months.
The plan was to do that with this money?
No.
So you're bringing up a really interesting question. And this is a question that's been posed to me that we haven't been able to, we will have an answer eventually, but it's being researched, and that is, the guidance isn't available yet. I mean, there's some guidance on what we can use this money for, but not all of it. But what's going to happen is, is when this money starts hitting, it's hitting Ohio, Pennsylvania, Maryland, Virginia, Kentucky, and the price of everything's going to go way up, right? Because we're not the only counties and cities that are getting money. And so are we allowed to start pre-contracting for the things we want to do before the regulations come out under some contingency that if the regulation says that you're not allowed to spend it on this, that the contract is voided? We don't know yet. But it is a, it was, it's a very, very important and interesting idea that can we start to take advantage of being smaller and more nimble in a way that we start contracting for goods before the prices, I mean, it's going to go up.
And we know that it's going to go up. I mean, the week this was, the stimulus bill projections of what we were going to get were announced on a Friday. Our due date for our RFP responses for our master plan would do the following Wednesday.
And which, are you guys doing 5G broadband or you're doing wired?
We're looking at all the above approach. We're, that's what we're asking the consultant to do, is to provide us with.
Great idea.
You know, the best plan, you know, what works in Morgantown may not work on the western end.
Well, and what you need is different too, right? I mean, you already have a lot of broadband, so the idea that getting broadband to Mon County is a bigger, it's a much different project than getting it to Mingo County.
Yes, so it's a, it's, that's what we're looking for, someone to kind of help us make all of those decisions on what goes where and what's a good fit. So we're hoping to get there. But yeah, they announced this two days before people were supposed to submit their bonds, so I'm sure they added, we have a couple zeros.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And so on that end, you guys know Tiffany and Ora and Shelley, but we hired Patsy Trekost, who's a commissioner in Harrison County. And his first day, I think, is Monday of next week. And he's in charge of both building the regions for the, for the, we have 11 regions set up, both for informational purposes, but also for sort of the pooling of resources. You know, it doesn't have to be in these 11 regions, but this is just how we drew the lines to say, you know, these are the groups of people that should really think about doing stuff collaboratively. But all of the questions that you have will be directed through him, and he will be communicating with you guys on a, probably a weekly basis at first, and then bi-weekly and then monthly about how that, how all of the regulations change. Because what we do know, especially with the last money, and my guess is, is this will happen with this money, is the, the rules are going to change fast, right? Treasury changes these rules quickly, and we have, and so Patsy is going to be working very, very closely with Joe's office to make sure that we have the most up-to-date. And we will. I mean, he's going to know more about it than anybody in the whole world, so.
Specifically, I was going to do it under my report, but I'll make a public, Joe Manchin's office called us on Monday to have on April 8th at 3:30 in this chamber, he's going to have some discussions of the latest information. So I'm sure Patsy will want.
No, it's perfect. I mean, and the way that this is really, I mean, it's, it's sort of an interesting collaboration, but, you know, in this state, the way that my office is set up, I mean, we are the ones that have to make sure that this money doesn't get wasted.
Yeah.
And the only way that you can do that, in my experience, is with transparency, right? I mean, the only way that you can really, really prevent bad outcomes is if people know what's happening. And so we are able to use that transparency that we've all been working on, particularly here, to do a multitude of things, but not the least of which is that Joe is going to have more access to how this money's being spent than anybody else in the whole country. I mean, we're building him his own dashboard. So all of the spending that's going to be uploaded by the cities and counties is going to go directly into his office, so he'll know as well.
And I want to say publicly, it is so great to hear Joe, who is a Democrat, you are a Republican, it doesn't matter, it's what's best for West Virginia. It's so nice to hear, you know, you're not talking, there's no politics in this. This is, we'll make sure we're going to be accountable for the funds. And I just want to say, I happen to turn on the radio when you were on Hoppy Churchill, and I really want to thank you a while ago, you really promoted Mon County, saying that we were the first ones about the program. And it was really appreciative, and that goes statewide. It does make a difference, and I only hope that many of your individuals in Charleston hear that. But since you're here, you know I'm going to ask you a couple of questions.
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
We're doing the RFP for broadband, but at the same time, Senator Manchin's office was very clear that I think the state is also getting $130 million for broadband. All I'm asking generically now is, no one knows how to tap into those or how we do a match. That's something I'm going to ask you down the road. And more importantly, the second one, which is more personal, there's all this money for food. I run the pantry program. We want to know how you can tap into it. No one has, we don't even know who to talk to, but then maybe it hasn't come down yet. Those are the kind of things, if you could get that out, because I'm sure every county is interested in that.
Have they, have they hired somebody at the USDA for that job? There's the state director, all of the food programs would be running through that person. I mean, when there's a new administration, there's, Chris Warner had the job before.
But see, if it goes to the state, then we don't know if someone from the state makes it.
It's a great question.
And we just want to follow the rules.
So on your first question, here's what I would say. The fact that you guys are getting a plan together on how you want it to look.
Right.
Is massively important.
Yeah.
Right? Because then, when the funds do come available, you're going to be able to say, all right, this is, this is what we want to do.
Exactly.
It's pretty hard to overcome the person, the first person with an organized approach to a problem, right? And so, you know, it almost doesn't, at this point, matter where the money's coming from. It sounds to me like it's coming. You know, because we also have the Capito Connect thing, which I think.
And she's involved.
They've bonded out like, I don't even, I don't really understand from a technical perspective how this is working, but they essentially sold the ability to buy broadband with, with a bill that the legislature passed. But I think there's $400 million, $500 million in that program as well. Plus this $130 coming in, plus all the rest of this money can be used for broadband.
Yes.
You know, a lot of the places I go, you know, people are always, they talk broadband and broadband, but if you don't have sewer systems that work, it doesn't make much sense to put broadband up first, right? I mean, you can't build a house where you can't flush your toilet. And so, you know, there are, you guys are in an enviable position insofar as a lot of your sort of underlying infrastructure is in a much better spot than it is other places, and so you can sort of work on these aspirational problems. But knowing how you want to do it and having a really, really good idea of the cost is, I mean, that's massively important, and it helps drive the discussion in the way that you want it to be driven. And I know you guys have a lot of drug rehab stuff going on here too. And my presumption is, is that a lot of this money will be able to be used for that purpose as well. And that's another infrastructure issue that nobody wants to talk about in West Virginia, is that we underserve that problem to a pretty significant degree, especially as it relates to housing.
People forget before COVID, I mean, that was our number one social problem that we were working.
And it's worse now.
Yeah.
It's funny that they forgot, because the problem has been exacerbated pretty significantly.
In fact, actually, yeah, it's gotten a lot worse.
And so, you know, we're going to get out of this thing, and when people, when people start thinking about normal problems again, that problem is going to rear its head again, and it's going to be worse than it was before.
Well, we, well, I personally appreciate, I mean, because I think the relationship you have with the county commission, Renetta and stuff, has been exceptional. And I really appreciate you coming up and working with all avenues of, you know, parties, because that's the only way we're going to get the answers.
Sure.
But I will still ask you that little thing about the food.
No, I think that makes sense.
Because no one knows. And let's just say it this way, the concern was, the difference is, I'm very appreciative that the money's coming directly to the cities and the counties. The other direction.
Remember, the state's getting $1.4 billion too.
Oh, I didn't even, yeah. I didn't even realize that.
Yeah, the same time you guys.
We want to make sure that we're.
It's $5 billion coming. The county school boards are getting like $700 million also. It's, it is.
It's, yeah.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
I mean.
So we just want to make sure that Charleston, even though we're getting that fund, as everyone else, doesn't forget us.
Sure. And I do think that in this, with this round of funding, your ability to use some of it for that purpose is going, and I can't say this for certain, but my presumption is, is that you will have a much greater ability to use those funds for the things that you want as opposed to before.
Right. We appreciate that.
Which, you know, you guys are elected, so that's what's supposed to happen.
Jeff, do you'd like to say anything to our auditor?
Yeah, that's great. I appreciate you coming up today.
Yeah, it was really nice to meet you, and congratulations too.
Thank you very much.
If you were nice, if you could just approve our budget we sent down last week.
Well.
Actually, we sent it on Monday.
Interestingly enough, we're getting pretty close to that becoming a much different and faster process, right? So the whole OpenGov thing, and, you know, it just is what it is, but this, this money that's coming in is going to, it's going to speed up our Project Mountaineer stuff tenfold. And we're going to be really, really close to these things starting to be fairly automated, because it is, the technology exists to make this stuff go faster. I mean, you can see it, the way that you send it even to Ora and Tiffany and them is, it should be a checklist as opposed to a giant review. And so it's happening.
One of the things you may be interested in, again, it's how we look at things here in Mon County. We've been through the whole COVID crisis, we've been working in conjunction with our sister counties. By sister, I mean sister to the north, Green County.
Oh, cool.
So we've had, we've had almost monthly, well, during COVID, it was almost weekly conversations, and then we've moved it to monthly. But we even had a call yesterday with representatives from McKinley staff and representatives from Rothson Feller.
Yes.
Guy Rothson.
I actually know him.
Really?
Yeah, I do. He's a neat guy.
Again, just talking about the whole slate of things, you know.
So that's another imaginary line, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's another, huge imaginary line.
So we've been working with Greg Puckett. I don't know if you know Greg, who's a commissioner down in Mercer County.
Yeah.
And he's one of the, one of the national chair people in NACO. And so a lot of this plan was sort of developed with him and Patsy, obviously, as well. plan was sort of developed with him, and Patsy obviously as well, and so, and, you know, he lives in a border county that's even more of a border county than yours, right? So Mercer County, I don't think people from Mon County drive to Green County to do stuff very often.
No.
People in Mercer County drive to Virginia to do stuff all the time. I mean, it is way more symbiotic, I mean, to the point there's a Bluefield, Virginia, right? And so Greg, that was really, the first thing that he mentioned to me was that when you are a place like Mercer, or Berkeley, or Mon, or Parkersburg, or Huntington really for that matter, these regional coalitions are probably going to cross state lines as well. You know, you look at, just look at Quarter H, right? Why isn't it four lanes? Well, because 10 miles of it's in Virginia, and they don't want it to be four lanes. They don't want people driving here. And so, you know, a lot of this stuff is going to cross those lines as well, which I think is going to be very, very important for us to be, to make possible for you and for my office to be on top of the way that the guidance is working so that you understand how to do it.
We certainly look across those lines, because those lines are blurred. We, we employ a lot of Green County residents, majority of the residents, just.
It's probably the other way for Green County, right? My guess is, is they come here to do stuff as opposed to the other way around.
Yeah, they live there, come down here, and then go back, yes.
Because we have the university and all of the services, and they don't.
Ohio. So again, we try to, we try to look all around us, our neighboring counties inside of West Virginia and even our counties outside of West Virginia.
And you've got Ohio counties that aren't more than 50 miles away too, right?
Correct.
I mean, so it's really a bunch of, you're in an interesting spot.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, guys. And we'll stick around here for a little bit afterwards.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, next item on you, do we have any other elected officials or department supervisors? Okay. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Yeah, first, again, I'll reiterate, Manchin's office called, he's planning April 8th at 3:30 to 5 o'clock to come here with different officials to explain, you know, as much information as possible that they have about the, the funds that we're all getting. Second, Saturday night, I was able to attend by Zoom my family, it's called the Pressman Family Seder. It's our 136th annual, which is, it's just unbelievable. And actually, Zoom is better because people from all over the country were able to come to it. So I want to wish all my Jewish friends happy Pesach. I know Easter's coming up, so I will say happy Easter to you all. Last, yesterday, as was just Sean just mentioned, we had a meeting with our congressman and Green County, and Green County's congressman, and basically the introduction that we said was develop the regional approach through COVID-19 response and need to leverage our likeness in demographics, economies, and interests. And there were a number of issues, of which the Riverlock Improvement, which is key for us, was very important. We talked about the Morgantown Remote Work Program, broadband, other incentives, and they even recommended the possibility that we reach out to the Appalachian Region Commission because they like mutual grant programs that might possibly cross state lines, and this is something new. So I thought, I thought it was an exceptional meeting, it went really well. And the final thing is, I spent last night, I went to the West Virginia Botanical Garden. I have to admit, I have not been there since the 1970s when that was a reservoir, and I would pay my $1 plastic raft and go floating over there, and I was amazed. It's 85 acre, it, I didn't realize we had such a place. But we had a ribbon cutting for the event lawn pavilion, which was provided by Cheat Lake Rotary, 84 Lumber, March Western, and EQT, and I strongly recommend people go to that hidden special event. I mean, it's unbelievable, we have our parks, now we have that, we have a lot of places that hopefully will be opening up when COVID's gone, and that's it.
Jeff?
Well, piggybacking on that, I was, not to step in your territory too much, but I was excited to see the Chestnut Ridge Park has released its 2021 concert series, so it's just another sign that we're coming back. Every Saturday from 6:30 to 9:30, $5 admission, there'll be live music. It's a really great place to go and a great place to gather, socially distant of course, but it's good to see that's back on the pages and on the books. And another, just reiterate, another shout out to our wonderful vaccination clinic. I've had calls from multiple constituents this week about how wonderful the process was, that even though lines were super long on the days, they got them in within about 15 minutes, and after their wait time, they were out the door usually within 30, 40 minutes from the time getting there. It's an incredible collaboration with WVU, Mon Health, and the Health Department, and it's really getting our citizens, getting those shots in the arm. So I believe it's ages 16 and over now, you're eligible to register, so keep doing it, keep getting out there, getting these vaccinations, and we can get back to business. Maybe not as usual, but at least get back to some sense of normalcy quicker than maybe we thought before.
Whatever normal is.
Exactly.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Since the last meeting, last Thursday, I had a Mylan Park Foundation Executive Board meeting, and then in the evening, we had our MMMPO meeting. Friday, we had our special meeting to approve the budget. Again, thanks for everybody that worked hard to, every year gets more and more flawless in regards to the depth that we go into and the product that we put forward, so thank you. This week, yesterday, we had a call with Green County Commissioners and our congressional representation. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, we have our technical evaluation for the broadband proposals due. Tomorrow morning, they're due, and then in the evening, we have an MMMPO special meeting. Other than that, I do note that it's the Easter week, and I wish all of our employees and all the public a happy Easter weekend. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.